Check one, check two, check three, check four.
Welcome everyone to the Nat U-Hill. I want to call the meeting of the Monroe County Council, day August 3rd, 2024. I know. All councilors here in the Nat U-Hill. Councilor Iverson, Councilor Will, Councilor Rossley. All right, Councilor Rock, Councilor Munson, and Councilor McKim. I'm Trent Decker, sitting here in the Presiding Officer's chair. I'm Trent Decker, sitting here in the Presiding Officer's Chair. With that, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an agenda before us that has been posted to the public, and at this time I'll ask councillors, is there anyone that wishes to make an amendment to the agenda that we have? Good? Alright, nice and easy. Let's move on then to, do I need to do an adoption on that? I never can remember. No, we're good.
Changes.
Alright, so we'll keep that agenda moving on. Item number four, this is public comment, and public comment is for items that are not on our agenda. There will be a time limit of three minutes per speaker. I want to reiterate that whether you're on Teams or here in the Nat U Hill Room, all members of Monroe County, all members of the public are welcome to make public comment, and you're certainly welcome to the Nat U Hill or to this space and to this courthouse. And so with that in mind, on by anyone in the public that wishes to make a public comment, items not on the agenda, come forward here to this podium, and then if you're on Teams, raise your hand and we will get to you one at a time. And as speakers, as you come up, state your name just so the public knows and for the record.
Okay, I'm gonna try to daisy chain this with me and my friend here. Eric Spoonmore, President of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, joined at the podium by Krista Curtis. Sure many of you know Ms. Curtis, familiar face in our community, serving as a business leader and also the Chair of the Ellisville Chamber of Commerce. I've got a letter that we have sent to the county commissioners, also would like to distribute it to you all as well too. We understand time is of the essence with the matter of the jail location and where it's going to go, and so we just want to thank all of our Monroe County leaders for their diligence in addressing the need for a new justice center in Monroe County, and for the time you've invested in identifying the right location. Your decision will have long lasting implications for Monroe County, and we recognize that time is of the essence. Respectfully ask that you consider an additional location option that has come to our attention. Cowden Enterprises owns property at 3241 West Woodyard Road in Bloomington that appears to meet the acreage requirements of the new justice center. The owners have expressed willingness to sell the property to Monroe County and have indicated that water, sewer, electric infrastructure is available adjacent to the property at the corner of Vernal Pike and Woodyard Road. The owners are willing to pay for a Phase One environmental study at the request of county leadership, though there's no anticipated environmental concerns with the property leadership from our two local chambers of commerce toward the property recently. In addition to the points mentioned above, we think this property is a viable option for the new justice center for these reasons. Fiscal responsibility of taxpayer dollars. We understand the price of this property to be significantly lower than other options resulting in considerable savings to taxpayer dollars. That's why we're here talking to you because of the fiscal aspects of this. Proximity of services. Location is close to employers for potential work release programs, close to health and social services, in Bloomington, close to recreational amenities, city bus service, easily accessed from Vernal Pike and Woodyard Road, I-69, close to the Indiana State Police Post and Fire Protection Services. Future needs. The property has sufficient acreage for today's justice center with room to grow as needed. We also understand there may be additional adjacent property available that's for sale that we just learned today. Economic development. This site will not interfere with local land use strategies and community visioning for future planning and economic development. We're aware that the county is considering the North Park site as a possible option for the new justice center at a considerably higher price, and believe that locating the justice center on that property would not only have negative fiscal impacts to taxpayers, but would be an underutilization of that location. As a gateway to Bloomington and Ellisville, the North Park property could be incredibly valued from an economic development standpoint. We encourage collaboration among the North Park property owners, elected officials, and local communities to identify and support the most strategic use of that land. We also recognize the public has concerns with the justice center being located at a prominent entry into our city. I've got zero time left, so that's the final paragraph.
We urge you to consider the impact on taxpayers and the cost differential and future land use potential between location choices. Thank you for your consideration.
Sure. We had two speakers and we've got plenty of time. Is there anything else that you wish to say for your peace of mind?
Well, I think, just really want to reiterate that we appreciate all of the time that county leadership has put into this discussion. We know that time is of the essence, but we think this is a really viable option. We're concerned, the chamber is a source of, you know, our businesses being a source of taxpayer dollars that come to local government. We're very interested and concerned about how those tax dollars are spent. We want to get the best value for our dollars, just like you all do as a fiscal body of county government. So, we wanted to make sure that you were aware of this. We haven't heard it as part of any of the presentations that have been made. We've seen three other properties, but we just think that being able to vet this, understand a little bit better whether or not this would be a suitable area of the community and suitable land for the jail would be worthwhile. I don't think it would put us back too far in terms of delays. We've got representatives, landowners here, that would be happy to answer any questions that you have as well too. I'll leave copies of this letter with you, and we've also sent it on to the county commissioners as well too, but we really just want to make sure that we can continue to collaborate and have conversations about this and that the door isn't closed yet, and that, you know, we can just kind of understand whether or not this property works. If it doesn't, understand, but would just like to know why.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. Obviously, I'm representing the Ellisville community tonight, and the discussion on the site for the future jail and justice center is really important to our community. In 2019, we started the process of developing a community-wide vision for the future of our town, which we call Envision Ellisville. In 2019 also, the Community Foundation and the BEDC released the Monroe County Quality Place and Workforce Attraction Plan. That document identified Ellisville as a critical piece of the puzzle for the county, a place where there's opportunity to meet the housing demand, a place where we can attract new employers, and also a way to improve how people experience living in Monroe County. What's good for Ellisville is good for the county, and so we are linked, and that's why I'm here. Last year, I'm really proud to say the Envision Ellisville Vision Plan was adopted as our town's comprehensive plan, so we have a new comprehensive plan, we have a land use plan, and our town is now finishing an update to the Unified Development Ordinances. Our goal for Ellisville is to create a new identity and a new future for our community. So you can imagine that hearing a new jail and justice center was being considered at the gateway for Ellisville from I-69, how that was met in a public meeting. It was met with emotion, it was met with quite a bit of surprise, I personally heard about it on Facebook, and it was met with some discouragement. It's natural for the people of our community to have questions about how this fits into the vision that we created for our town. It's important that Ellisville's voice is considered and respected as we continue to move through this project together. Eric's hinted many of the points in the letter, but I can tell you that the core concerns from the Ellisville community include the cost of the North Park property as compared to other options, the location and how it impacts our plans for the future, a lack of collaboration and communication on this topic, and a question of whether this is the best and highest use of the North Park property. So I'm here tonight to respectfully ask on behalf of my community that the county evaluate this option that we have presented, and that our community has a seat at the table moving forward in these discussions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Alright, appreciate the comments. Others wishing to make comments here in the Nat U Hill Room or on Teams, raise your hand or come forward to our podium. Councillors, help me watch my eyes are failing me. Come on forward. Hi.
Hello, my name's Tom Orman, and I have Craig Cowden here with me. We thought it'd be nice to come up here and...
Can I get a little closer?
Sorry. I'll get a little closer. We thought we'd come up and present ourselves to see if there was any questions that you might have about this particular land. We have agreed to sell it for whatever it appraises for through the county process, and I believe you have to take two bids and equal the two outs. So, if you guys have any questions, we're here to answer any of those.
Yeah. Councillors, we generally don't do that in public comment, and I would suggest to hold that for the county commissioners, and I actually think doing this in public comment there, I can't speak with the commissioners, would be good for them as well. And then also Jeff Cockrell, I believe, is the commissioner's contact for land questions, and so that might be a good venue there for that.
I would like to suggest since we haven't had this opportunity to hear from the public, except for our meeting in Ellisville where we were told that no decision had been made, and ever since then, it's like, oh, we've already made a decision. And so, I represent the Ellisville area, and so does Cheryl, and so does Jeff McKim, and so does Trent Decker. And so, the four of us certainly should have questions as well as the entire council membership, and we should be allowed to ask those questions. And the longer you put it off, because we're supposed to be talking about jail financing on Friday, and so I think it's imperative that we have some answers on whether or not we're going to consider something other than what has been presented to us as a done deal.
So, Councillor Hawke, do you have a question? Did you have a question for these two gentlemen?
Right, I have a question of them, but also a question of the county council.
I think it's to them, maybe directed to them.
Well, I just want to make sure it's clear that while we've had conversations, I'm not the one that went forward and found this location. It was a neighbor who did, who attended the meeting in Ellisville and said, have you thought about this? And so the answer was, well, we had, I think they might have been looking at perhaps the wrong property. I'm trying to figure out what the situation was, but we were told by legal representation that we would need around, they weren't sure there was enough buildable acres. Now, as I, but we were told it was going to be, what, about 20, 25 buildable acres that we'd need for the project. How many buildable acres do you have available?
That would be correct, Marty. It's 20 to 25 acres of buildable land.
Okay, and have you met at all with the architect or whoever would want to look at that to see if they thought the ground was appropriate?
No.
Do you know of other property if, for some reason, they have expanded and said, oh, well, they need 30 acres or something, when before it was like, from the experts was telling us 2025, something like that. So, what other ground might you think might be available? You have how many total acres available?
Yeah, 53 acres total available.
53 acres. And do you have ground that you're aware of that might be possible to purchase that adjoins your property?
I'm told there is land that is surrounding this property that is available for sale.
Right. But we actually don't need 40 acres right now, it seems to me, if what we're talking about for the project is the jail and the courts, and we're told that for that project, 20, 25 acres is the amount that's needed. And then, have you arrived at a price? Do you have a price that you want to share with us that says an amount not to exceed or something of the sort that would, because it's hard for us to say we're going to save millions of dollars if we really don't have your price.
That's a great question, and we're in the real estate business, and I'll say it's significantly cheaper by probably a third of the property that you're looking at would be my educated guess. We don't know what the appraisals will come back on these properties, and we deserve what we think is appraised value, but based on my expertise in the field, it'll be significant savings to the community.
It would be what?
Significant savings to the community.
And how?
I could throw a price out of what I think it might be, and I would probably be pretty close, but I don't want to, I don't think that's fair to do that.
You don't have to. That's not... And I, I understand that I, I just know that for us to say we're going to save millions...
Absolutely. I agree with you, and you're like, okay, put your money where your mouth is, how are we really saving money? And it will be significantly cheaper.
Right. Do you have anything further you'd like to share with us? I know when we were driving by, my daughter and I sort of almost camped out there for a while, driving back and forth and trying to figure out the property lines, and what I saw was frontage on both Woodyard and Vernal, and both have driveway cuts already entered, is that correct?
That is correct.
And there's a fire hydrant already in place on Woodyard, is that correct?
Correct.
And is that water line coming to the property more than a 10-inch water line, which is sufficient for the project?
I believe it is a 10-inch.
Right. So, and what is the investment that this county's already made in the connection that will be going over to Gates Drive? We don't have the highway department here. There's an investment being made that will connect very closely over to Gates Drive on the other side of Vernal.
Sunrise Greeting Court. Sunrise Greeting.
Right, right. I mean, I knew where, I was just, I didn't want to make the report, I was trying to get you to make the report. Is there anything else that you could share with us? Because I know that there are neighbors nearby, I've discussed it with some of the neighbors, and they don't have a major problem with this. I mean, nobody wants to think that commercial's coming that close, but it's already zoned appropriately for commercial, it's zoned light industrial, is that correct?
That is correct.
Could I, I was going to, just want to say something. I'm a lifelong resident of the Ellisville area. The cows have been there for a long time, and when I saw the Kreider properties where they're considering, was one of the considerations for the jail, when I realized we had the land on Vernal, I got in a conversation with a person, and I think that's the person that reached out to Marty Hawke, that I'd be more than happy to sell the land because I really don't want a jail right there on the way into my hometown, you know? And I, we drove it, and it's actually, our location's probably closer to the courthouse than Kreider, this property, because you go right over Interstate 69, there's a, they built that, originally that road was going to be a corridor out to the warehouses, so that's why it was originally built, but that's, it goes straight into, comes right out there at the roundabout at 17th Street, so it's actually really good access, and I thought, well, I'd rather have the jail there, you know, I'd benefit if you did buy it, but being an Ellisville resident, I don't really want it to be, you're driving into Ellisville and that's what you see. So that's why I reached out to this other person.
And I understand from a comment of a fellow council member that it's within walking distance to a bus stop, is that correct?
The bus stop, I think, is a mile, a mile away.
Is that...
But I think maybe you could get them to extend the bus stop out to the property if you built a jail there.
And there's, it's also within walking distance to the county park, the Will Detmer Park there as well, and it's very close to the fire station.
Yeah, it's actually walking distance to the state police post.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware of all of the benefits that we might be able to garner from there, and also at the same time, making... be able to garner from there, and also at the same time, making the entire town of Ellisville a much happier participant in helping to pay for this project. And it's clear, the city of Bloomington is very aware of how important a gateway is, because they've put a lot of money into the gateway into Bloomington. The county commissioners are aware of how important a gateway is, because recently one of the county commissioners were concerned about the entrance coming in from the west side, they didn't want to have boat storage there. So that's a recognition by two of the leaders, and that there's, a gateway is important. And so that is why I appreciate your Ellisville Chamber of Commerce coming to talk about the gateway to Ellisville.
And we thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I agree with what Craig said, I also live in Ellisville, and I think there's a better use for that property than the jail, just personally.
All right, Counselor Munson, you said you had a question.
So I want, I want to hear from people who have information about whether adjacent properties are available for sale and what they offer to the total package. 25 buildable acres may be needed immediately, but you don't make long-range plans and just limit yourself to the exact corners that you're going to build on. I think this needs to be a plan carefully considered for the future. So that's, that's, that's one point. And the second is that I appreciate you coming forward to talk with the commissioners and then bring this to us as well. And discussions will continue, I know.
Thank you, thank you. I think there could be more than 25 buildable acres with some excavation, a lot more, to be quite honest with you. And the property, if you go to the property and you drive up on top of it, it's actually a very beautiful view. You kind of look down on the highway, it's absolutely beautiful.
So I've looked at this on the GIS and, and the planning aspect that the GIS reports, so.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you so much. And again, I offer the encouragement that this be relayed to the county commissioners as well in their, in their public comment.
Thank you, Trent.
Thank you. We've got a hand online wishing to speak on an item on public comment. Just to remind the public, we're on items that are not on the agenda that you wish to make a comment on. So it looks like Dee has a hand raised, so Dee, if we can unmute TSD, we'll take Dee's comments. Dee, when you unmute, if you can state your name just for the record, or when they unmute you.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, my name is Dee Burris. I'm the owner of, part owner of a company called Texan LLC, who owns the property adjacent to Mr. Cowden. And I found out about this today and was approached about it, and I too, and I don't know, I don't live in Bloomington anymore because of health, and I don't know what, whatever current property they're looking at is costing, but I, I am willing to, it's very possible you could get an additional 59 acres adjacent to Mr. Cowden's for maybe, I don't know what you're paying for the North Park site. But yes, we are willing to work with the county in selling this land if they need additional acreage. And it also provides a, it is an easy walk to the, all the commercial warehouses out there. It is right next to Detmer Park as well, and also very convenient to the Sunrise Greening Court Road.
Thank you, thank you, Dee. Appreciate those comments. And I'm going to ask you one more question, just because there are people that may wish to follow up to ask more questions. Are you the representative for that property that you...
Yes, I am the managing member of Texan LLC, which comprises myself and my sister.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Any other comments for items not on the public agenda? Either come forward here in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams. All right, we good? Let's move on to our next item. Thank you, everybody, with your comments. Let's move on to department updates. And this is going to be for departments wishing, the county wishing to make an update. I'm going to give a time limit of 10 minutes, just to keep us moving. And do we have any department heads here in the Nat U Hill or on Teams? If so, come forward to a table or podium, take your pick, or raise your hand. Now, I did, I had one that I missed, the auditor had a comment. At least I thought she did.
I was going to introduce my newest staff member, however, she had to leave, so I will, next meeting, you will get to meet her. Thank you.
We appreciate that, and I should have caught that myself. All right, thank you. Any other departments wishing to make an update? The commissioners are here. Come forward, commissioners. Timely time to be with us. You could sit there, that would probably be easier for you. Welcome.
As I'm sure you all know, the Form 144s have been presented to us, which means it's now time for us to make a recommendation as to the salaries of our employees next, this next year. And you have before you a letter concerning this, but I'll go ahead and read it into the record. Dear esteemed members of the Monroe County Council, as required by law, the auditor's office has presented the Form 144s, a budget estimate of proposed salaries and wages to the Board of Commissioners. Our role in this process is to provide a recommendation to the Monroe County Council for consideration prior to setting the salaries and budgets for 2025. We appreciate the council's commitment to ensure that all Monroe County employees are paid equitably and adequately, reflecting the current local employment market and the local cost of living. We also understand the fiscal pressures facing the county, the county government. As you are aware, there has been a significant increase in the cost of living nationally, regionally, and locally. We applaud the council's efforts to try to maintain competitive wages over the last several budget cycles. However, from 2021 through the middle of 2024, the Midwest CPI increased 21.3%. In that same time period, council provided cost of living increases totaling 16.1%. While the 2023 rate of inflation was 3.4%, a 5.2% increase accurately reflects the total increase in the cost of living since 2021. First, we recommend that the council provide an increase for all employees, except those who have statutorily mandated salaries of at least 5.2%. Second, we recommend that the council continue to work toward pay equity and ensure all full-time county employees earn a living wage. Third, we ask the council to consider calculating future CPI increases based on the July 1st to June 30th time period, and that would be June 30th of the year the budget is composed, rather than the January 1st to December 31st time period, and that's the December 31st of the year before the budget is composed. We are proud every day of our Monroe County employees and all they do for our community. They're the ones who make things work. As our colleagues on the county council know, ensuring adequate pay and keeping up with the cost of living will have an impact on our ability to retain our excellent workforce. Respectfully, the Monroe County Commissioners.
So there are a couple pages with, that came along with this. I provided the research that I could on the second page of this that shows where I obtained some of these numbers to do this calculation. And we know that this is a big ask, and we know it may make you uncomfortable, but we feel that this is what is necessary to both attract and to retain the staff that we have. And I should notice, note too, that we have staff that have been with the county for 30 years, more than 30 years, and some of those staff have brought their own children to work for the county. They like working here, but we can't push them out because they can't afford to stay here. I also attached a copy of an article from the HT dated July 17th that indicates that the median house of price, the median price of housing rose 10% over this past year, which is a lot to take into account, because we know that your housing costs should not account for more than 30% of your take-home pay. And then also I included an article about how teens are having to enter the workforce to help subsidize their families, because families just can't make it. So I think there's a lot going on right now, but I think that we should be very, very proud of the people who work with us and for us every day, including your own staff. And so we're here to answer any questions.
Sure. Well, we appreciate very much you coming in to explain the recommendation. Counselors, did anyone have any questions before I offered a couple initial comments? Yeah, Counselor Iverson.
Thank you, commissioners, for bringing forward your recommendation and for providing us some resources. We do wish to retain our employees and provide wages, and I'm glad we shared that goal. I was very happy to see this article from the Herald Times from this July indicating that it is a difficult time to buy or sell a home in Bloomington. And I'd just like to point out that there, the indication that the reason why it is so difficult is, quote, "We just still don't have the inventory," which is causing prices to be so high. We simply just don't have enough homes in this community, and I'm looking forward to the CDO process and talking with you all as you navigate that process to fix that. So thank you.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes, can you tell me, have you done a financial on this to see what the fiscal impact is for the county? Or did you just come up with a percent?
Came up with a percent, I wasn't aware that, I was being requested to do the fiscal impact. I thought that, yes, yeah.
I've got Counselor Wiltz next.
Yeah, along the same lines. First, this doesn't make us uncomfortable, at least I should, I guess I should speak for myself. I think we all want as much as we can for our employees. So I appreciate the work that you did to put in, you know, justifying kind of where you're getting the numbers. I will take a close look at that. I, you know, I mean, it's a matter of affording it, right? And so we'll have to see, I mean, we're jumping into the annual process right now, and it, that is what makes me uncomfortable, is, you know? This process is hard, it really is.
But Michelle feeds you, you know?
That's true, we do get cookies, which makes it better. But I, I do think that, to Counselor Hawke's point, we're going to have to look closely at what we can afford, what are the fiscal impacts of this, and the variety of other requests we're getting, and make those decisions. So I just wanted to thank you for providing that and assure you that we'll take a look.
Thank you. Counselor Munson.
I envy the commissioners having the opportunity to do this every year. This is my 12th year in hearing a recommendation for the commissioners about cost of living increases. And I think it's great to put together the information and to, to help us see what the sky might, might offer us. And you know what we're going to go through, that the fiscal impact is going to be what drives our decisions, and that and all the other expenses for the county. But I do envy you commissioners being able to do this. Thank you.
I've been on both sides experiencing this, and I completely understand that you all are going to have a lot of work to do to see whether or not you can make this happen. And we did not always manage to make it happen in the past, but we'd love to see it this time.
Counselor McKim.
Yeah, and I, obviously I'll remain open-minded as we, as we look at the numbers, but I do want to remind everybody that already we know one of the, one of the key numbers, the maximum levy growth quotient, which is 4%. And of course, we've already, I mean, Michelle was, she was just showing us a draft of a list she's putting together for the council that shows all of the positions and increases in hours that have already been approved. And so that 4% may already be spent before we, before we even consider cost of living. So, you know, I guess we can all hope for a really, really positive income tax report, but my guess is it's probably not even going to be 4%. But I, I hope I'm, I totally hope I'm wrong on that. I just want to make sure that I temper everybody's hopes and aspirations, though I certainly understand the reason why the commissioners are presenting the numbers they are.
Thank you, Counselor McKim, and I appreciate very much you coming in statutorily, as you're required, to make the recommendation, as you have done in, in years past. I will note, we have a lot of things in this budget to figure out. Last, I believe it was two weeks ago, we had the deputies and our jail officers asking about a potential change to retirement benefits. And it does come at a cost. I've since then informally heard from other departments that also want to go that route, and that would then be even more costs. Liaisons have begun meeting with departments, and I've heard about those costs, a few I've seen myself. And so it's always a real messy process figuring out what we can do. What I will say is last year, when we hit 7.2, or was it 7.5? Does anyone?
8.5.
Sorry, it's fresh, I blocked part of it out. We literally went to departments and generously, departments figured out where they could make economies or cuts so that we could make that work. I'm not in favor of doing that all the time, although I'll say if you submitted a budget and it's, it's not to what you need, and there's any pad, by heavens, get that pad out of there, we can do more of these things. But I'll say it's always a process, and I appreciated that last year, as, and I'll offer this as well, as the son of a county employee who's now retired. I remember days, these kinds of numbers were not even floated near this room. And I like the fact that we are thinking always about our folks and how we take care of them, because what happens in this county didn't happen in this room, it happens on those counters and on those roadways with Ms. Ridge and with the folks that our deputies see and what have you. So with that, any other questions? Counselor Hawke.
Yes, I also would like to, just as a reminder, know that, that 4% increase is, covers what we can do with all these different budgets that's set within that frozen amount. And this past year, some of the operating dollars were taken out of, like out of the health and out of reassessments and so forth. And so we're going to go, have to go into that 4% growth and in some way, replace those dollars. And I think, you know, you and I have talked about that, Councilmember McKim, I don't know exactly how much it's going to have to be. The Health Department thought that it was going to be maybe another $650,000 to make them, to try to make it go back to where we have to be, because the additional dollars coming from the state is not supposed to replace what we were doing. We were supposed to keep that up. So that's something else we'll have to look at. So as we move forward with budget preparations, there's a lot of different things, a lot of different items we'll have to take a look at.
I've been attending some of the department head meetings recently, and Seth Elger has been doing a lot of incredible presentations, and I've learned a lot from him. And it, when we hire a new employee, he says it takes about six months before that employee is really up to speed with what they're doing. So losing good people has a real cost to it, too, and it, it stresses the rest of the department when that has to happen. So I guess I might love some of those things that I've been hearing also, but thank you for your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Other departments wishing to make an update here, raise your hand on Teams or come forward, going once, twice. I think we can leave that alone. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item number six. This is council liaison updates. Counselors, any updates you wish to make? Counselor Iverson.
I'm going to make a very quick update. I'm very excited to announce that the 2024 Monroe County Recovery Summit, which is going to take place on Thursday, September 5th, from 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., is now available on eventbrite.com. You can get your tickets there. That information is being pushed out on social media through the Sudak site, and press releases are going out, and that information also is hitting newsletters throughout our region and indeed the state. So don't miss this important event. Again, that's September 5th, 7:30 a.m.
Thank you very much, Counselor Iverson. Other counselors, anyone else? All right, let's move along then from council liaisons onto the consent agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the following consent agenda items. The May 14th and May 28th, 2024 County Council Meeting Summary Minutes as presented. And B, the Health Department's Request and Fund 1161-0000, Local Public Health Services for the Creation of Account Plans as Laid Out on the Agenda.
Second.
All right. Are there any questions from council regarding the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll go to members of the public. Any comments on the consent agenda? If you have them, raise your hand on Teams or come forward in the NatU Hill. Okay? All right. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote, let's go to a voice vote, because we can do that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda has been adopted. Item eight is our fiscal body's annual review of the estimated property tax levy limits and property tax caps circuit breakers for non-binding entity review in budget year 2025. I'm going to look to Michelle for this one.
Why are you still laughing?
Not so soon.
Oh, my.
Maybe as you talk about, can you explain a little bit, or, or do we need to call in the auditor for some of this?
I found it. So, um, this is a report that Jeff McKim in the past has always put together with regards to the non-binding review, review for taxing units. And so Bree and I worked on this today, and I realized, Bree, we missed one. We didn't get the tax cap amounts in there. We missed a tab, so, and I apologize for that, so, but, um, not as eloquent as Jeff McKim is in presenting all of this information, but
You're doing great. We're in the transition season.
This is, um, the max levies review, um, and honestly, I, I don't know what to say, you know, because I have not done this.
Sure, 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 sure.
But this is the information, and, um, Bree, do you have anything to say?
Sure. Thank you. So what is showing there is for each taxing unit, the civil max levy, so that's before any deductions like tax caps, et cetera. And so that's what you're seeing there, the very, the very max possible. And then if we go to, and you're seeing, you know, the different levies and so forth. And then on another tab, there is the tax cap estimate. We always go a little high on those. The DLGF estimates, I think it's $210,000 for 2025. We just up that slightly to $300,000 and applied those to the levy funds. And I'm having trouble seeing what I'm looking at here, so I'm sorry.
I'm having trouble seeing it, too.
Do you want us to make it a little bigger?
Mm-hmm.
Will that help you?
There we go. Yeah, and then, of course, we have the rate-controlled funds. Those are the rates that we have adopted, and they continue until we make a change. So that's Q and Bridge, cumulative capital development, and then major bridge there. And then the units, some also have cumulative funds there noted. So we have Bean Blossom, Richland, and Bloomington City, of course, and there's others that have developed, you know, have adopted a cumulative fund for either special projects or special circumstances, whatever it may be. And then the next tab, Kim, if you move over, it shows the, the debt for all of these units as well. So we went through, and the anticipated debt, where noted, is, is demonstrated there as far as debt that will be either engaged in 2025 or the, by the end of 2024, or anticipated debt payments that, for debt that's already in place. So in reviewing, considering all of that, it just helps with the budgetary decisions as you move forward, and we can try to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Well, let's see if council has comments or questions or things they're thinking about. Counselor McKim.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. I, yeah, I don't think there are any surprises this year. I did want to, I was thinking maybe you could actually bring up the DLGF county-specific website so we can see where the source numbers come from, in case anybody wants to drill down. If you just go to the DLGF county, I usually just Google DLGF county and and then go to Monroe. Actually, it kind of doesn't matter because these documents, and then if you look under reports, the, the first couple of bullets under reports are the, the DLGF data that, that is used to, to, as inputs for this analysis. So for example, in particular, the one that's always the most interesting, I think, is the tax cap, is the circuit breaker credits. And so that report is actually called the Estimated Property Tax Cap Credits by Unit Report 2025. And so if you click on that, it, it's a big report, so it takes a long time to load. That's what it's, what it's doing now. And they have the, the DLGF now populates a spreadsheet with all counties. So if you change that top county to Monroe.
And I had a process question, Counselor McKim or auditor, Kim. The recommendation on the estimate comes from DLGF, correct? So it's, it's not necessarily the council making or the auditor making a recommendation. It's the state just says, we think you should do this. I just want to be clear on that for anyone looking for guidance from this body.
Well, it's not something we do with, with respect to the tax caps. It's the state's estimate of what the impact is going to be on, on us. And so if you look, and this is just for our unit, so if you scroll down a little bit, you can see that 2025, that $210,000 estimate and the, the assumption that the DLGF used in terms of the percentage. So that's, it's a very minimal impact. And in fact, as, as you could see, that the tax cap impact, kind of high watermark was 2022, but the tax cap loss has been going down significantly from Monroe County ever since then. And then if you just, if you go up, you could just click on any of the other, other units at the top. So right now, that's for the county as, the county unit, but you could change, no, the county itself, yeah, that, that one. And so you, if you wanted to see, say, Bean Blossom Township, for example, you can go down and see what, what their estimate is. And, and if you look through all those, you're not going to see any surprises.
And I want to say that I did put all of that information in the packet. So the tax caps and the levies are available in the packet.
But the other thing that you worked on today is obviously not, which is fine, and that, I have, I'm sorry, I have a question.
No, please, go for it. That's what this is for. Go for it.
The floor is yours.
Apparently, I'll just take it.
You, you mean this report here?
The, the Excel file that you were, yeah, yeah. Because, you know, we review it, non-binding, yada, yada, yada. But then typically, the, we ask the auditor's office to kind of let everybody know that's impacted, and is that then what we are doing now?
Yeah. We don't want to make any recommendations to any of the other units, which I don't have any recommendations for the other units. In fact, I think the whole process is a little strange, but we're required to do it.
Well, the formal invitation that we adopted, and I, I sent it out under my name, but it essentially says if those units that are in Monroe County wanted to come, they would be able to do so and available to answer questions from this council. I kind of tried to water that language down because I'm not sure that we're in the business as our organizational practice of saying, "Ellsville, what you got going on over there?" Doesn't work real well that way, but that's how the state guides us on this process.
Got it.
Other questions or comments? I see the auditor, and then I'll go to Counselor Hawke.
Sure. You mentioned something about just notifying the units. If you don't have a clear recommendation, which it sounds like you may not, I'll simply provide, as required, the approved minutes to all of the taxing units once they go through and you formally approve. Okay? Thank you.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes, I just thought for the benefit of the public at home that might be listening or for any of you who might have an interest, what is similar to this, only it appears to be a bit more accurate for what perhaps the, the different units might be considering, is when you look under the local budget notices. And that's why I keep my eye on that as they're coming up. Now, they've already started. Bloomington Township has their notice, and their Van Buren Township has, Washington Township, and so forth. And then when you get to that, you can see what their proposed budget is and what their proposed levy is and the date of their public hearing, in case you want to be there to see what's going on and to be a part of that, and then their adoption date. But then the next line that you skip over to, when you click on that, that then will take you to the notice to taxpayers, and it'll tell you the time and place and so forth, and it'll tell you exactly what the, the budget estimates are. And remember, the numbers that they put in here are just as with the Monroe County government. You cannot exceed the numbers that you plug in. So the taxing units many time will put in a higher number than what they actually think they were going to do, because once they've got this as public notice and once they've done that, then they can't go any higher. But that's the part that, that I always keep an eye on to see what others are doing. But that's not a part of what we're required to do today.
Other comments, questions on this? We've fulfilled our statutory duty, correct? All right. And I don't think there's any of those bodies here tonight. If they are, you can certainly make a comment if you wish. Raise your hand on Teams or come forward in the NatU Hill, but I just see a lot of our department heads. Okay? All right. Well, in that case, I think we can move off this item. All right. Thank you very much. Let's go to item number nine on the agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the Board of Commissioners and CARES Board request and Fund 1148-0000, Drug-Free Community, an additional appropriation in the amount of $41,901.99 in the services category.
Second.
All right. To speak on this, we've got, looks like Lisa is here, TSD, make sure you can unmute her.
Hi, everyone. Let's see if I can get my camera on. Good to see you all. Yeah, I'll just give a little bit of information for those of you that don't know and for the public. The CARES Board is a local coordinating council or LCC from Monroe County. The CARES Board was established under executive order under Governor Bai as part of the drug-free Indiana mission to support and promote local efforts to prevent and reduce harmful involvement with alcohol and other drugs. The primary responsibility of the Board is to distribute funds to justice, treatment, and prevention programs and initiatives in Monroe County. The Board has $41,901.99 to allocate this year, and will be asking for 14% for operating costs. So you might have some more information in front of you, but I'll just go through it so that everybody knows the programs that we are asking for, to, to fund this year. And before I list off the programs, we have $11,967.33 that we are requesting allocation for all three prevention, treatment, and criminal justice categories, with the remaining $6,000 to go to administration. I will share the agencies, the names and a little bit about them, and the requests that we're asking. The first one is Monroe County Drug Treatment Court. They are requesting funds for randomized drug tests as an intervention tool to monitor offenders' substance use while under the supervision of the drug, drug court program, and they're requesting $1,600. The Monroe, the Monroe Circuit Court Probation Department or Community Corrections is asking for funds to, for breath, alcohol breath tests as an intervention tool to monitor offenders' alcohol use while under probation or in, uh, Community Corrections supervision, and they're requesting $750. New Leaf New Life provides support to individuals during their incarceration with accessing, receiving services and resources. This includes assistance with creating a reentry plan, obtaining a copy of their birth certificate to prepare them for employment, providing treatment, applications, and case management to help secure placement. They also identify and strengthen relationships with the community agencies to aid in the referral process of their clients to their services, and they're requesting $4,317.33. New Leaf New Life has a second program that is requesting funding. It's a, a program that is for folks who have recently left the jail, and these funds would go to staff to work for those coming out of incarceration, to provide diverse supportive services, living skills, and obtain necessary documentation as they transition back into the community. Their, this program is requesting $4,224.33. And then we've got Big Brother And then we've got Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and they are requesting, this is a youth mentoring organization that matches adult volunteers to a child in a variety of programs. This money will be used for the one-to-one program and case management services. And they're requesting $40,000, $4,150. And let's see. That's what I've got in front of me. Any questions that you have, I'm here for that.
Let's see from counsel. Counselors, questions, we go to Counselor Iverson first.
Well, congratulations. I mean, the, the LCC is such an important part of our community. I know that you all have presented before the Substance Use Disorder Advisory Commission many times, and we're just so happy to hear the report that you are giving this evening. And I fully support the request here. It does sadden me a little bit that the total amount collected has decreased once again, but we're certainly here to support those in need in our community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Iverson. Counselor Wiltz?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you, Lisa, for your work on this, because as Counselor Iverson said, it's, it's important, and I don't know how many people really know about this entity. I mean, it's, I learned about it just because I worked with the Health Department years ago and was like, really? There, this exists? And, you know, it's, but it's good work. It's important work, and I just wanted to express thanks. Yes, the, the funds you have to work with are decreasing as fees are decreasing, which is overall maybe a good thing, you know? So, yeah, you know, there's a lot, a lot there. You have regular meetings, and are those open to the public? Is, I, that was my question, my long lead-in.
They are open to the public, and anyone's welcome to come, and we're always looking for new board members. So I can just read off my email. It's LLM, as in Mary, EUS, as in Sam, ER@me.com. If anyone from the public is interested in learning more about what it entails to be a board member, or anything like that, please email me. I'm happy to go over it. It's a, it's a really nice board to be on because it doesn't require financial contribution, and it doesn't require a ton of time, but it does allow people to get to know what's going on in the community and different agencies and the people in our community. So, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions. I also wanted to just uplift that Steve Malone is in the room, too. Steve Malone is the active president and has been the president of CARES for many years. So thank you, Steve, for being here, too.
Thanks, Lisa.
Welcome, Stephen. Do you have anything you wanted to add to, to any of this?
Yeah, I raised my hand. I just, there was a second page that I don't think, maybe Lisa may not have gotten, but I wanted to let you know.
That's what I was wondering. I just pulled it up on my computer, actually, because I'm like, there's more grants, what's happening here? But then I didn't know if maybe there was an abbreviation to, to report. So I'm happy to report, or to share, there's, there's four more, one, two, five more programs, two more from Amethyst House, one from Courage to Change, one from Beacon, and one from Indiana Recovery Alliance. I'm happy to share the information on those if you'd like to hear them, or you might have that in front of you, I'm not sure. So it's up to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have it in front of us.
We don't have that. We love that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, and thanks, Steve. I wasn't quite sure what happened with that, with that document. So, so Amethyst House has two houses. They have a men's program and a women's program. Both of them provide residential treatment, outpatient counseling, and supportive services to men or women, depending on the house, recovering from addictions. And Amethyst House provides drug and alcohol treatment, which includes gender-specific therapy groups and an intense relapse prevention program. The men's program is requesting $4,150, and the women's program is requesting $1,000, $4,150.33. And then Courage to Change is a sober living that provides peer supportive transitional and permanent housing options to people affected by substance use and their immediate family as a way to provide peer-to-peer and transitional recovery opportunities. And they are requesting $4,100. We've got Beacon requesting some funds to operate Crawford Homes program. Crawford Homes is a 25 one-bedroom housing unit at Crawford's Apartments. Let's see. Looks like they are, this is, funds are for a quarter-time position for a licensed drug and alcohol counselor to provide counseling and programming directly to the applicants and residents who are experiencing addiction. And then the last, no, we've got, yeah, one more. Indiana Recovery Alliance, they are, they offer low-barrier services and a variety of outreach methods to empower participants to reduce harmful involvement with alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. The funds are, are used, going to be used to, for an equity-focused project with significant potential to change community attitudes toward drug use and reduce substance use by promoting harm reduction practices and raising awareness of the risks of overdose. And they are requesting $4,260. So I think, I think I've got them all listed now.
Thank you very much.
So that's, yeah, $11,967.33 for the justice, the prevention, and the treatment categories.
Thank you. Counselors, any follow-up questions to any of that? Yeah, Counselor Crossley?
Thank you. I just, as a comment, I guess, I just wanted to say, say thank you to Mr. Malone and Ms. Lisa here for all the work that you do. I know, and talking with you, Lisa, like you are very much passionate about the work that you do. And it's just, it goes to show how our community is really trying to help our most vulnerable. I know that's something that all of us are near, it's near and dear to us as we think about a lot of different things. And as we continue to talk about the justice facility conversation, this is something that I hope that we can continue to do in lockstep with how we are imagining folks coming out of incarceration and being rehabbed back into society. So I appreciate this report, and I just thank you all for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Hawke?
Yes. For years, when this was first established, there was a county council member who wanted to join the board, and I served on it for a while. It is very time-consuming. I just want to tell you, I think that they would tell you as well, it, it is a big job because, and for a little bit of money, because there's not that much money to pass around. And of course, there's less and less now, but, you know, if anybody would, would say that you'd like to be a member of this board, I'm sure they would welcome you until you ran out of steam.
Yeah, we would love to have people interested, yeah. We have a busy month usually, like one, one or two busy months where we are doing a lot of work in, in the agencies and following through with our state obligations. Otherwise, it's, yeah, it's, it's pretty minimal the rest of the year, which evens out nicely.
Well, thank you very much. One, one item I'll just make before we go to a public comment here is, a lot of times up on this side of the, the equation and among our elected officials, we talk a lot about treatment. And we sometimes talk about that like that's something that either is being invented or new or adding to the process, but I think folks like yourself would beg to differ with your practice, serious knowledge, and, and approaches to this. And I think that in those discussions, like Counselor Crossley was talking about, this factors into that, because we have smart people who have done smart things. A lot of times when folks like us, we're not necessarily always looking. So I, I appreciate that, and it's not lost on me. Are there any questions or any comments, any further questions from counsel? Pardon me. Let's go to public comments. If you have them on this agenda item, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. All right. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too.
Let's go to item 10.
Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request and fund 1000-0009 General Fund Prosecutor to amend the 2024 Salary Ordinance to remove line 13028 paralegal and to create a new line 13037 Intake Legal Secretary with an effective date of November 3, 2024.
Second.
Good evening, counselors. Beth Hamlin with the prosecutor's office. In order to better reflect the duties that are performed by this position, we are requesting that we get rid of our paralegal position and move that, we'll fill that on a part-time basis. And instead, we want to create a second intake legal secretary position because the workload on that position has just really skyrocketed for a whole bunch of reasons that I'm happy to go into, if you'd like me to. It's a reduction in classification from a Comet D to a Comet C, a combined salary and benefit reduction of about $2,680. That includes salary and benefits at a three-year level. It depends on what, how many years of service a new hire will have. I'm happy to answer any questions if you'd like.
Thank you, Ms. Hamlin. Let's go to questions from counsel.
We don't get this kind of request.
I know.
Never know what I'm going to get up to.
We really want you to pay more. Yes, we want.
We're just sort of staring, aren't we? Any questions or comments? We, one thing I'll just say on job descriptions, and this goes to PAC and everything else, we want to reflect what you think it should reflect and do as best we can. Usually, this is going a different direction, so it sounds like this is what you want. Anything else? All right, let's go to comments from the public. If you have any, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hamlin.
Have a good night. Let's move on to item 11, a request from the courts.
Counsel, I move to approve the court's request and fund 4018-0000 Court Interpreter Grant and Additional Appropriation of $10,000 in the Services category.
Second.
Lisa Abraham is here from our courts.
Good evening. They, the state has changed the dates for my court interpreter grant. They used to be January 1 to December 31. This year, they, I had $10,000 for the beginning of the year, and luckily enough, they've changed them out to July 1 to June 30. So they have given me $10,000 more for that 12-month time period. So this is a reimbursable grant that will pay for our interpreters that are requested for court hearings. So I'm just asking to appropriate the $10,000.
All right. Questions, comments from counselors? So you stunned them all, they're quiet as mice.
Biggest, biggest honey.
They're happy as clams. Okay, let's go to comments from the public. If you have them, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
While she's here, I wanted, Lisa, I just wanted to thank you for spending so much time with me on the phone and, and going through all my questions for me. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Let's go to item 12, a request from emergency management.
Counsel, I move to approve Emergency Management's request for fund 1000-0361 General Fund Emergency Management and Additional Appropriation of $500,000 in the Services category.
Second.
All right, we have with us Jamie Nibel, our Emergency Management Director. Ms. Nibel, the floor is yours.
So this is for the heavy equipment account for debris pickup that's still continuing. Just to bring everybody up to speed, we have finished Perry Township, Van Buren Township, and Clear Creek, and began pickup in Richland and Bloomington Township today. The only outstanding invoice I have at this moment is for $119,760, and that goes through July 25.
So let's go to questions or comments from counsel. Counselor Hawke?
Yes. As a comment, I was pretty excited when I saw that huge truck in front of my house, and my neighbor across the street was pretty excited as well, because the stack from that tree was gigantic, took two trips. And by the way, I'm Richland, and it started yesterday. So they, I mean, it was amazing. I turned my chair around, set up in front of the window, and didn't want to miss one thing. It was like some kid watching the big, you know, the big equipment work. But it's just amazing what they can do in a short amount of time, because that was a pretty big tree down. So I just wanted to say thank you. And maybe I'm not supposed to vote on this since I received assistance?
You drive on the roads, too.
Yeah. I just want to be fair about it, say.
Yeah, no, it's a big program. Counselor McKim?
So I, I apologize. I want to make sure I understood correctly. Do you still need the $500,000, or are you saying that, that we should reduce that appropriation request?
I believe it's still needed. I don't know that we'll use the entire amount, but just kind of, kind of with a cushion so that, no, no offense to you lovely people, but so that I may not have to come back.
Understood. Thank you.
Counselor Munson?
Yes, Jamie, thank you for this report, and I am a little concerned because I drive a number of our rural roads and see piles of brush and trees still, still to be collected. Are there questions from any residents still coming in about when they're going to have these, have the vegetation removed?
They have slowed down immensely. So we were getting up to 15 to 20 calls a day.
Yeah.
But they have slowed immensely. Now, we're kind of fielding just the timeline questions, you know, like that we, we can't really answer because we don't have.
You're not in charge of the contract?
Yes, exactly.
I understand. So that, that's important for the public to know, that it's very hard to give a definite response on, on the time. But your number is out there, and people are free to call you and, and check on scheduling as best they can. So, thank you.
Counsel Iverson?
My question is actually very similar to the one that my colleague just raised. I'm looking at the press release that you sent out on July 26th that's on the front page of Monroe County's website, where you have the schedule of all the debris pickup. And I'm excited to see that you're coming into the council's first district now, so welcome. I'm really excited that you're coming over to my neck of the woods. And I just want to know, so that I can relate to, to my constituents, that you expect to be on schedule with what was on that press release, that pickup dates are still going to be around 14th, 21st, 21st to 28th, and August 28th to September 4th.
Absolutely. We've done really good with sticking to that schedule.
That's really exciting to hear, and I know folks are going to be glad to get the debris up off of their front lawns there.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Other questions? Other questions or comments? I would offer just one of my own. I, I appreciate the notion of going to the, the 500 and then watching closely and adjusting down if we need to down the road. Every one of these emergencies, we learn from and change, and in 20 years, we'll look back and giggle about things that we have learned, hopefully. But I, I'd say watch that, go to that, so it doesn't interrupt service in any way. We don't want that to, to have had happen. One last question I had, any of this eligible for public assistance dollars under the disaster?
Yes, I almost forgot. So we met, actually slightly exceeded, looks like we're going to exceed our county threshold, so that makes us eligible for state fund reimbursement. It's somewhere between 35 and 50%. I'm leaning more towards the 35 just because we've had a lot of disasters happen within the state, and it all comes out of the same pot. And that is highly depend, the percentage that we get for reimbursement just depends on what funds are there. Just to kind of remind you, most of the, the state funds and the grant funds that we get are funded by the sale of fireworks in Indiana. So keep that in mind. I know, odd, but true. But yeah, so depending on what's left in that pot after everybody kind of gets what they get, we'll see what percentage we get. But we did make our criteria. We are probably not going to see FEMA funds, which is that 75 that we would rather have, but the, we had that $4 million threshold to reach between Monroe, Clay, Baygo, and Owen, and we did not make that as of this moment.
One thing I'll just offer, just, and I appreciate that very much. I wanted to make sure that it didn't get lost in this, is those disaster dollars, those either FEMA or state passing through, those are key appropriations, and no locality in the United States or its territories knows when one of those is gonna hit. You know, at these, this, I mean, we were literally in here for a meeting a month ago or a month and a half, and that hit, and now we are cleaning that up, and it's a good thing that we can do. It's a small thing we can do. And so again, if, if you're talking to your federal, your state folks, everybody should be messaging that we need, that's part of the equation. We appreciate that very much, but it helps local governments like us do what we've got to do to crawl out of these things. Okay? All right. Any public comment on this item? If you have it, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. All right, seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Well, am I supposed to pass if I received help, or I'm, I'm just gonna say yes?
Go ahead.
Call the police if.
Yeah.
Call the sheriff or something.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Let's go to item 13, a request from the Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request and fund 8150-9624, Tanner Futures, and additional appropriation of $2,463.15 in the Personnel category, $5,000 in the Supplies category, and $500 in the Services category for a total, for a total appropriation of $7,963.15.
Second.
All right, we have Lori Kelly, our Health Administrator, with us.
Yes, good evening. So nothing too exciting here. This is just our standard request to appropriate earned income from our Futures Family Planning Clinic, which we receive from incoming fees and insurance reimbursements.
Okay. Counselors, questions that you have for Ms. Kelly? All right. Counselor Hawke?
I'm trying to think, is this the one that I called you about when I saw that the, is that the same one that, that I called you about where I could see the revenue was less?
I believe that was through an email exchange and comparing through the years, like pre-COVID and then post-COVID, based upon staffing levels and part-time versus full-time.
Right.
So this is just standard program income that we are appropriating, but that is broken down on that Excel spreadsheet.
Other questions or comments? Let's go to public comments then. If you have them, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke? Or Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kelly. Let's go to item 14. This is a request from the Highway Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request and fund 1169-0000, local road and street, the creation of a new account line 31244, pavement stripping, and simultaneously approve, appropriate $130,000 into the Services category.
Second.
Right. Welcome, Ms. Ridge.
Good evening. We're just wanting to create a new line in the local road and street budget to assist with the MBH budget for striping more of the roadways this year, getting caught up from a, a lack of materials from the striping company for the last couple of years. So we wanted to get caught up and get it, get the road striped that needed to be done.
All right, Counselor McKim?
That's striping, like painting stripes on.
It's striping.
My bad, I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, it's written though. It's a typo on me.
I just want to make sure that it's corrected in the actual account name, isn't it?
Is that what was heading in a different direction there for a second?
Well, it could have been like scraping. I honestly thought it was scraping.
That's what I was thinking.
Learning too.
On me, it's on me.
No.
It's all good.
It's probably.
I have seen.
Narrative did say striping for the record, so.
Counselor Munson?
I knew exactly what you were talking about because I have seen the yellow center line, freshly painted, and it's always very helpful to have center lines.
Yeah.
Was this also, did you do this on Starnes Road? Because when I was at on Starnes Road, it just had been repainted. It was beautiful, beautiful, but there were no lines anyplace.
So we have to meet certain warrants to do striping on roads. It has to do with road width. It has to do with ADT traffic counts. The materials for striping have probably doubled since 2021. And again, we spent last year not even being able to stripe due to lack of materials. So we, if you don't see the striping, the road might have not met the warrants to do that. We hope to be able to include more roads that are not warranted, maybe just as some extra to add to the program, but we'll just have to see what we can do in 2025.
Counselor Wiltz?
Who sets those qualifications or criteria for the striping?
It's out of the manual on uniform traffic control devices for the state of Indiana. Has its own manual. There's a national, but Indiana has chose to have their own. So that's where the guidelines are, what we have to follow on where we stripe and where, what's required to be striped.
Right, but you can go above, it sounds like.
We can go above if we have the funding, which we've done that on, in some locations. And this also installs for rumble strips. So it's striping the road and then also doing rumble strips where we put them, where we might have a site distance issue on a certain roadway. So that's also included into this budget.
Thanks.
Other questions, comments from counsel? All right, let's go to public comment. If you have them, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. All right, seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
For striping, yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Let's go on to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request and fund 9106-0000, CCMG, an additional appropriation of $1,384,678.25 in the Supplies category.
Second.
All right, Ms. Ridge?
So we've received our end dot funding for the match for the Community Crossing Program, and this, it was deposited in the last month, so now we just need to appropriate into the line so we can finish this out and pay the contractor.
Comments or questions from counsel? I just again want to express gratitude for all that you do to go after these dollars and to bring them into our community. They could go elsewhere, they come here, and I think that's huge. And we always kind of tease you about having the hot end with the state on bringing that, but it doesn't get lost on us, so we appreciate it very much. Other comments? Yes, Counselor Hawke?
I have a comment about another thing that a couple of other counties are doing in interlocal with, but we could have a vote on this, but don't leave because I wanted to ask you about that.
Let's, uh, let's see, we've done our comment. Let's go to public comment on this item. If you have it, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Counselor Hawke, did you want to offer your, the thing to?
She has one more, and then she has one more stormwater.
You want to do that one and then come back to it? Okay. Let's go to C.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request and fund 8176-0000, Eagleson Bridge, non-22, for the creation of account lines 37446 right-of-way and 37556 right-of-way consultation and simultaneously appropriate $569,800 in the Services category.
Second.
This is just for line creation for, to be given, right-of-way acquisition for the Eagleson Bridge that's set to go to letting in fiscal year 2026.
Questions, comments from counsel?
I'm just gonna be honest, I don't know where this bridge is.
This one's a little tricky. It used to belong to IU. So we, the bridge needed replaced for many, many years. So we worked, end dot paid for the design of this bridge at 100% in exchange for Monroe County taking the bridge and putting it into their inventory and help fund the replacement of it. End dot in turn, you know, basically gave us the 2.4 million for the Cars Trail. So at the time, it was getting the 2.4 million upfront for the Cars Trail for construction of that project, for me to take on the Eagleson Bridge replacement at 80/20, but again, design was 100%. End dot provided all of that. Now we're going into the 80/20 phases moving forward. So it's just kind of making a, a trade at the time.
Counselor McKim?
So is this bridge one of those that gets painted by the students every year? Or is that?
Yes, it does.
The overpass one that's, when you.
Railroad. It's right there by the.
Yeah, I know where it is.
Oh, yeah, I've passed that million times. Counselor?
Will the new design allow for plenty of painting space? Just literally wondering.
I'm sure there will be painting space. We have it on Roger Street also. So yeah, it's, it's something that's really hard to control. It's hard to take off, too. But, so yeah, I'm sure it'll have access because it'll have pedestrian access.
Oh, okay.
Well, one thing, just to add to this, here's a good example of some of the things I said before about state trusting you, trusting this process, making those trades. And if something got happened to them, they would have is, why didn't somebody take this? Who didn't take it? Why didn't we get it? So it's, it's key that that trust is there so these things can happen. So a bridge that nobody really knows what it's called doesn't become one that everyone in Indiana and beyond knows where, what it's called. That's awesome. Any other comments here? Let's go to public comments. If you have them, raise your hand on Teams or come forward in the NatU Hill. All right, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And next, we'll go to item D, a stormwater request.
Counsel, I move to approve, or approve, the Highway Department's request for Fund 1197-0000, stormwater, and additional appropriation of $450,000 in the Services category.
Second.
Ms. Ridge?
Morse Creek project is tied with actually the Stip Road project. We broke those in two to be able to construct one in one year, hopefully Stip Road next year, and be able to pay for the project, not bond for the project. So we have the contractor ready to begin the end of August, and then pave the remainder of Morse Creek Road out of our bituminous funds. And we hope this will all be done in 2024.
Questions from counsel? Seeing none, let's go to comments from the public. If you have them, raise your hand or come forward here in the NatU Hill room. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay. All right, that's it. Ms., Counselor Hawke, you had a question?
Yes. For those of you who received the message from AIC today, I'm trying to remember whether I saw it on Facebook or if I saw it in an email. But it was two counties who were working together with an interlocal to buy the equipment to do a chip and seal. Now, I think I'm describing that correctly. Now, I know that's not your preferred method, however. I don't know how expensive that equipment is, and it might be that we could do a bit. Oh, I guess I shouldn't even mention that. God, after me right there. I just thought there might be some locations where we could, with our own employees, whatever, maybe make a difference where we might not be able to get to it for a very long time to do the bituminous, which I know is your preferred method. But I would like for you to just look at that and talk with us at some point in time, wouldn't you think?
I can give you a pretty good answer at this point.
Okay.
One, we only have about 50 miles out of 710 that are, remained as gravel. The other reason why we stick to paving is because we're one county that we have access to two asphalt plants. Most counties don't have two asphalt plants right in their vicinity, so we can get better pricing with asphalt than going out and buying the expensive equipment, the manpower to have to do chip and seal versus paving. So that, we get really good pricing from, and it's very competitive, having two asphalt plants so close together to be, be able to bid our projects.
Well, thanks for that answer because when we discussed it in the past, you had not mentioned that the reason why it's better is because we have the availability of the two asphalt plants. Makes a lot of sense, and it will give me something that I can take back to my brother who's very unhappy about trying to drive to church and bumping the whole way, so. the whole way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rich. Have a good night. We're going to do public defenders' requests and then go to recess after that, counselors. So next on our item, number 15, public defender.
Counsel, I move to approve the public defender's request and fund 1,000-0271, general fund, public defender, to amend the account lines in the 2024 salary ordinance as laid out in the agenda.
Second.
Okay, and we're pleased to have with us tonight Mr. Michael Hunt, our chief public defender, as well as Ms. Duffel from the office. Go ahead.
Good evening. I will say that this was brought to our attention, and Ms. Molly Turner King has volunteered to come up with a plan and also volunteered to present it to you.
Yes, so this is something that we basically asked them to ask. So in the salary ordinance, attorneys are either classified as SO Attorney A or an SO Attorney B. In the public defender's office, the classification as an A or B depends on when you become certified to do the higher felonies. So to make life simpler for everyone, instead of having the public defender's office come back and amend the salary ordinance every time someone gets qualified, what we'd like to do is change all the attorney classifications as to SO Attorney A/B, and then that way they would slot them in, and we would still be paying the correct pay rate with the classification.
Right. Counselor McCam's got a question or a comment.
Yeah, so this certification, is certification a, is it an objective certification, or who grants the certification?
This is blind.
It's objective in that the public defender commission makes us, has certain rules as to who can try what level of cases. So you have to have so much time of employment, and then you have, depending on the level of qualification, you have to participate to a certain number of trials to completion within or above that level. For example, if it's a shoplifting case, a new attorney can do that relatively soon. If it's a murder case, it takes several years, and they have to have participated in murder cases that were tried to completion. So it varies as to the level, and that's, that's the problem. And I think the issue came up here because we had an opening for a B, or, yeah, B-level attorney. That person left. We couldn't hire anybody. We didn't have any applicants. We finally hired somebody in at the lower salary level, but they're in a higher position. So we were paying them less than what the salary level called for. And rather than come back and ask the council to change that job description, this is the solution we came up with.
Correct. What happened was an SOB attorney left. They hired an SOA, but the salary ordinance has them classified in an SO Attorney B account line. And so their pay rate doesn't match the classification. And so we would have to make that amendment. And instead of making the amendment, then waiting for them to classify or certify and coming back a second time and reamending it to back to what it was, this was the creative solution we came up with.
Okay, so, but so somebody would not, somebody who is not certified, even if they're slotted in to a particular slot, they would still be paid as, at an SOA until such time as they actually qualified to be a felony.
Yes, and we never know exactly when they're going to get certified because you don't know when they're going to get that trial.
Okay.
Or trials.
Thank you.
So follows the intent, the purpose, and gives flexibility for us not having to do back and forth.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions, comments from counsel? Counselor Hawke?
Yes. Just as a matter of how this works, then when you have someone that meets the guidelines, then you notify payroll at that time so that they could change that. And then I would assume that you would be looking at your budgets. If we didn't, if we budgeted for a certain number of one type and another type, your budget's going to change around. So who's watching at that? Is this, is our auditor's office watching that? Is payroll watching this? I mean, everybody's going, somebody else. Are we watching it?
I would assume that the financial person in their office is watching that budget and then making requests to you if items need to be.
There's a process. They'd have to submit like a payroll change and all kinds of other things that occur.
And I would just think you might be able to, you know, slip us an email if, if you see a drastic change that we're going to have to make, some kind of adjustment for. We'd rather have a, know about it in a little bit in advance so that we're prepared. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from counselors? All right. Thank you very much for working with Ms. Turner King, and thanks for helping us figure this out. Any comments from the public? If you have them, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. By the way, when I gesture that way towards Teams, it's because I have a screen that tells me when someone raises their hand on Teams. All right, seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McCam.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the public defender's request and fund 1,200-0000, public defender supplemental, to amend the account lines in the 2024 salary ordinance as laid out in the agenda.
Second.
This is the same thing. We pay some people out of the general fund and some people out of our supplemental fund. So it's the same.
All right. Questions, comments from counselors? We're satisfied on everything. Okay, let's see if the public has any comments. Raise your hand on Teams or come forward in the NatU Hill. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McCam.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right. Thanks again for wading through all the other items we had and helping us out with this. We appreciate it. We're going to stand in recess for 10 minutes, counselors. That means at 7:03. We're going to come right back in here, and we'll go from there to resume the calendar. Thank you.
Oh, please.
Let's power through.
We could have finished.
I have family from New York here.
Well, let's wait, so.
I almost read it like that, too.
You wrote what?
Well, someone's got to do it.
Probably not.
TSD, can we mute, please, while we're on break?
Hello, hello?
This is a request.
We were muted. Hang on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
TSD, can you please unmute? Thank you.
Thanks, TSD. We're throwing a lot around in here, but we will get the rest of this agenda accomplished here. Item 16 is a request from the Board of Commissioners and the Auditor's Office. And pardon me, did I? This is our ARPA request, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
And I am on the right spot, right?
Yep.
I'm not skipped around. Okay. And I did not have anything ARPA scheduled tonight, but I want to make sure I'm consistent on that. And the auditor had noted something to me in the break.
Yes, I would like to request a deappropriation in the services category for the emergency management heavy equipment services line. You just appropriated tonight the amount necessary in the general fund. And upon further information received from emergency management about reimbursements that are likely to occur, we can't use ARPA for that.
Okay.
As it's federal funding.
And how much was that?
It is $240,000. And the account line is 35052.
Okay. Counselor's comments.
Okay, I'll make sure I understood. Because we're getting reimbursement, we can't use ARPA for even the dollar amount that we're not getting reimbursed for?
Well, I don't think the amount of reimbursement is clear at this time. So that's one issue with that. And no, if there's a reimbursement coming in, it would likely be after the time that we're required to have everything obligated. I think, as we're all aware, FEMA, for example, takes quite a bit of time to process. So we would just be returning the money to the feds, which really doesn't make sense. We want to maximize all the funding available. So that's my opinion anyhow. It's completely up to you.
No, we won't.
My only concern about this is, as I've mentioned before, when it comes out of the general fund, then that means that it's coming out of the fund that's supposed to help the entire county. And we're not helping the entire county with this because the city has their own, they're taking care of their own, Ellisville's doing their own, and we're only serving those people who live outside of those areas. And that's the reason why the ARPA fund seemed particularly the fair way to do it. I don't know exactly what else we could do, but this is just my thoughts on it.
Let's get some thoughts here. Other thoughts on what the auditor has suggested and Counselor Hock has commented on it. Counselor McKim?
Well, I guess, I mean, I understand what Counselor Hock is saying as far as benefiting the entire county. But, you know, on the other hand, we use the general fund to support the planning department, for example, which only has jurisdiction over it.
Right.
So I'm just going to go ahead and make the motion then. Counsel, I move we deappropriate $240,000 out of line 35052.
Got a motion and a second. We'll go to a discussion on Counselor McKim's motion. Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, I guess I'm okay voting for this, but what makes me really nervous is we've got 140 days to appropriate these funds. And I'm just getting really nervous.
Me too.
And that's why we don't want to be in a situation where we're going to get money back from FEMA and just kind of start right back.
That's exactly right.
And I don't want to say that I was disagreeing with that at all. I think we have to get moving on making sure that we are using our funds appropriately and that it's not going to be sending back. Because I don't trust the federal government spending it better than we will.
I think we can do a better job, too.
Well, we've done a lot with these dollars already, and it's huge. And we will, in our lifetimes, probably not see a program like this again. So now's the time to do it, because you won't see it in our terms at least. Can the auditor?
Yeah, if I may just respond, as far as the timeline and, you know, making sure we have all the funding obligated and we maximize the funding available, my office is working on another status update. So we will let you know where we are. We had a brief meeting with the Commissioner's Office and Legal Department just yesterday, and all kind of came together to see, you know, just to share information about where we are and what's going to be under budget, over budget, et cetera. So we're going to have more information to share shortly.
Yeah. Thank you very much. So we've got a motion and a second. Oh, go ahead.
Well, I guess, I don't know if it's pertinent. When you have an update, I was wondering if maybe at our next council meeting, we could have, like, a discussion about it. So that's, you know, two weeks, so would that be okay?
What we could do on this, because your point and Counselor Iverson's point, what we could do is ask if our partners at the Commissioner's Office through you could help us reconcile amounts, what's out, what's not, because we are, we're getting to the landing of the plane versus us just keeping this on the agenda with nothing to do. Let's put that to help pressure anything needs to get pressured.
Yes.
It's a good call.
Yeah, I like that. Sure. Mr. President, what I can do is reach out to the commissioners with you on for a copy. We can all kind of come together, and we'll provide an update to the commissioner spreadsheet, as well as the spreadsheet my office is keeping with a little bit more detail and notes for the status.
Yeah.
And then, yes, we can present that. I'll go through it line by line. Thank you. You're welcome.
And I'll also relate to you, Counselors, Commissioners' President, Julie Thomas and I will often talk, as Counselor Crossley as well, about the ARPA dollars and kind of ending the sequence. So none of this is getting past us, but reminding ourselves in a few different venues is not the worst thing in the world. Awesome. So we've got a motion and an underlying second on this from Counselor McKim. Any other comments on that before we take that to a roll call vote? All right, let's see if the public has a comment on Counselor McKim's motion. If you do, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wildes?
Yes.
Counselor Hock?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay.
Counselors, I need you to make a motion to table the additional appropriations for ARPA to the next meeting, please.
Counsel, I move to table the additional ARPA items until the August 27, 2024 County Council meeting.
Second. All right. Any discussion on this motion? No, seeing none. Let's go to a roll call vote.
Sorry, we also need to table the deappropriation as well.
Okay. I will amend my motion, and I will say, Counsel, I move to table the additional ARPA items as well as the deappropriation items until our next county council meeting on August 27, 2024.
And my second applies to that.
There's still any other. So motion and a second on the continuance appropriation, deappropriation. Let's just take a simple voice vote on this. All those in favor of the tabling motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries us. Thank you. Let's go to item 17, and this is a request from the auditor.
Counsel, I move to open this for discussion and possible approval of the additional appropriation procedures as presented by the Auditor's Office.
Second. Auditor.
Great, thank you. So we've just had kind of a verbal unwritten policy in the past. So after I took office, we've kind of been working on just documenting our policy and procedure. Obviously, that will be helpful to the next administration. It's helpful to us. We can share. So everybody has a better idea, and we're more transparent about our operations. So with doing that, we researched and tied code to all of those funds that do not require appropriation, so we can reference that. And that way, we, you know, have documentation of why or why not it's necessary. So in doing that, we found a few that traditionally, for years and years, have not been appropriated, that require appropriation, for example, donation funds. So we're working with departments to correct that. Also, our self-insurance fund also requires appropriation. We're working with employee services to correct that. And it's actually, it's just going to work out better for everyone. We can kind of budget a little bit more easily. It's, you know, just more transparent altogether about, you know, the way we're spending our funding. And so really, this is just asking for your blessing to implement the procedure that we've kind of already been following. So it's all there for you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. And so, Counselors, what comments or questions do you have on this?
I don't know enough. I did read it, and I really appreciate putting down on paper the procedures in your office. It's something that I don't think everyone does as much as maybe they should. And so, first of all, thank you for doing that. And unfortunately, I didn't bring my computer, so I don't have it in front of me. And that's fine. It's fine. I read through it. I did not find anything that was alarming. I found it interesting what needed to be and didn't need to be per the code. So that's my meaningless comment for this evening.
Well, it's appreciated. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Counselor Munson?
A question, please. I'm wondering about the need for this relative to our rainy day fund, because I believe the rainy day fund is very accessible. And when we have an emergency, that certainly could be considered rainy. Does anybody from the Auditor's Office want to comment on the flexibility of the rainy day fund?
Great. We have rainy day on as a next item. So we can have that discussion at that time, or we can do it now. It doesn't matter. So.
So.
Ahead of the game.
Yeah, okay, now.
Okay. So with regards to rainy day, FSG recommended that we set up account lines in rainy day for catastrophic events, and that we annually budget rainy day for this. Rainy day is to be used as a last means of money. So if you run out of general fund, you run out of whatever, then you go to rainy day. So on the next item, I'm requesting a million dollars for each category for supplies, services, and capital. And so then annually we'll use this if we, and then that way, the money is always available when needed. And then that way, we don't have to do the, you know, the two weeks of, you know, advertising and this thing.
Right.
So that was the recommendation of FSG as we move forward with making our budgets plans and everything. So.
And so, just so I understand, and help me recall the conversation with FSG, this literally is us budgeting for the disaster within rainy day, and then gives us a process to quickly use rainy day for the day that it has rained in this way, where it's a problem on down the road.
Yes.
Yeah.
Windy day fund?
And it would not, just to also make sure, what I want to make sure for future councils is it wouldn't put us into a, well, that's in rainy day. I'm not sure we should use it for that general. This would be for these key moments, right?
Did we skip the?
We need to make a motion, yeah.
I'll ask a question about appropriation.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, about appropriation. That's how it got there.
It is required in rainy day, though, appropriations.
Now, we're all doing it, right? Yeah.
Kind of hand in hand with Kim's request, we're going to look at the rainy day fund ordinance or code section, and we'll be talking about it further in the LTF meeting, because additionally, FSG recommends target fund balances, and there's a recommendation for a target fund balance for rainy day. So this conversation will come back up in more detail at the LTF meeting.
But on the underlying question, the auditor and practices, any questions or comments on that? Yeah, Counselor Hock?
Yes. Thank you for sharing this information for us. What I'm wondering is, is there a mechanism that wouldn't take a great deal of time that I notice on our worksheets here for the agenda, it's showing what the account balance is, if somebody's asking for an additional appropriation? Well, that's helpful, but it leaves one half of the question out, because it says what the balance is, but it doesn't say what is still available to be appropriated. Because you might have a $2 million balance in a fund, and maybe you've already appropriated a million nine of it, something. So I appreciate seeing those fund balances on our agenda so that we can see, when somebody's asking for an appropriation, how much money they have. Budget doesn't show how much money they have available to be used for something additional. So I don't know whether that's really difficult, but really, it's not a lot, not very helpful to see what the balance is if we don't know what's left to be appropriated.
Okay. Well, Michelle and I can discuss. Usually, your agenda request forms are typically discussed and handled, I think, during your planning meetings. But I'm happy to be part of that and help solve an issue if there is one.
Counselor McKim?
I just want to say, this is terrific. I mean, I'm really glad that you brought that to us. And I actually learned quite a bit from reading this. And I think clarifying about the funds that require and don't require appropriation and the lines that can and cannot go negative is really important.
And this is State Board of Accounts recommended language?
No. We did talk with them, get clarification where we couldn't find the information necessary. And they did do a once-over for us as well.
Okay. Your office has developed this for here?
Exactly.
Okay. Counselor Iverson?
Just a request. As we go through our processes over a calendar year or fiscal year, you know, bring this back up to our attention, too. I think that's going to be helpful to kind of understand that as we're, like, you know, especially those appropriations without cancel action, that's going to be important to kind of like jog memories of, okay, yeah, this is part of, you know, this document, and it relates to that Indiana code.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah. One thing I'll just, I'll just offer generally, I like the things that you're doing to professionalize kind of the roles. We can certainly remember in history in this county when maybe the other direction was where your office was heading. But one thing I'll just offer is the county beyond the county and the processes and the service that we do is all run by people for people. And sometimes state law or processes or state processes or other things don't always meet that very well. And so I would just always say, the nimbleness we can And so, I would just always say, the nimbleness we can, so that folks can continue to offer the services we have, bringing the resources we need, we've got to figure that out in a working process. And, um, the more you can do that with all of our folks, I think it makes their job, your job easier as well, because it is hard. I, I can tell you, as an ex-state agency head, Indiana law will sometimes walk you into a closet and not tell you how to get out of that closet. And agencies will literally offer guidance, as I don't know what to tell you from here. The law doesn't provide for that. So, it's, we're kind of on our own sometimes, despite all their advice and help. So, I, I just offer that because we're all neighbors and all that jazz.
You need a fruit-related metaphor for Indiana.
I'm out of them, out of them. I have no metaphors left for the year. Any other comments or questions?
No, it's good.
Okay. Well, I think you've got our input here. Does this help?
Yeah. Thank you. It sounds like I have your blessing, and we appreciate that.
All right. Thank you very much. So now, that takes us to item 18, correct? And that is the thing that I, we all jumped on to.
Uh, counsel, I move to approve the council's request in Fund 1186-0000, rainy day, an additional appropriation of $1 million in the supplies category, $1 million in the services category, and $1 million in the capital category for a total appropriation of $3 million.
Second.
Right. This is a request from our office, and so I'm going to turn this over to Michelle and maybe, uh, Ms. Turner King to, to talk further on what we've already mentioned a little.
Yes, like I mentioned earlier, this is a recommendation from FSG to annually appropriate, um, emergency funds for the county, um, when catastrophic events happen. So, this is us just being proactive and being ready at a moment's notice when somebody or, uh, you know, the emergency management department needs it, so.
Comments? Counselor Iverson?
So, I guess, my, my question is, why would these funds be created in the rainy day fund and not in a line with emergency management?
Because, uh, I don't know, FSG recommended this, because rainy day.
That's a good answer.
Yeah. Because rainy day is your last resort. So, if, uh, emergency management or has budgeted in their line, you know, in their budget, you know, um, 500,000 for, you know, uh, this kind of a, you know, emergency equipment or something, and it, you spend that out. Yeah. And we use that first.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
This is the last resort, so.
Counselor Wiltz?
So, I'm just processing and clarifying for, for myself, but, and I think this is what you were saying earlier as well. This is so that if things got so bad that we needed the rainy day fund, we wouldn't have to wait to appropriate. But this does not mean that next time we have an emergency, this is where we go to get our emergency funds, correct? Got it?
Yeah. So, to kind of answer Mr. Iverson's question, too, it's probably not in emergency management because although a natural disaster would, could trigger the use of these funds, other emergencies could too. And so, it makes sense to put it in rainy day so that it's, could cover any emergency. So, like, God forbid a building fell down, not necessarily a natural disaster, but we could use the funds from the emergency fund to.
And, and this would allow us time to go and advertise where, where we have other funds, so, but this is just kind of like a stopgap.
And to speak to Counsel, um, woman Wiltz's question, I believe that the proposed amendments to the rainy day ordinance will say that these funds would be used when all other funds are unavailable.
Counselor McKim?
So, and I, I definitely agree with the philosophy here, and I mean, I'm, I'm, of course, aware of FSG's recommendation and, and support that. I do wonder if, um, if we ought to wait on approving this appropriation until the new, uh, rainy day ordinance is approved.
I thought of that, too.
I think that makes good sense.
My intent was to bring the rainy day ordinance proposal to the next LTF meeting, which was originally scheduled for August 16th, but we're now using that as a jail planning meeting. So, if it was the wish of the council to just have me bring it to a regular council meeting, I could do a rainy day ordinance proposal at the 27th meeting.
Well, you've heard about two-thirds of the argument, so I, I wonder if that's not just a quicker way to, to get there. Plus, the LTF members also happen to be on the county council. So, so, LTF members, do you have any objection to that? Passing the jurisdiction over to council?
Let, let, let's do them at the same time, or at least do the, the ordinance before the, before we do the appropriation.
So, based on that, I propose a motion to table to the 27th.
So moved.
Second? All right, we've got a motion and a second.
It looks like Counselor Hogg has some thoughts.
I was just going to remind you that it, uh, the council many years ago said it would take, uh, more than a simple majority to pass anything out of there. Just, I mean, I know that's not what we're talking about now, but if we're changing the whole thing, I'm going to make sure we leave that in there if we're to honor pass council.
And make sure that since, um, Ms. Turner King is working on this, what, make sure you email or put in writing any suggestions or concerns, just so, so we don't lose them.
And.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, I'm, I'm.
It's a good, it's a good.
I'm saying, you're right, that is absolutely part of it.
Yeah.
And I've already looked at the resolution that language is in there. The only amendments that would have proposed is to clarify when it can be used, and it still has, um, language that refers to like coit, and so it would be updating the language.
Yeah.
And the reason why I mention that is because maybe the majority of the council no longer wants to do that, but I just wanted to mention it here, just to.
Let's honor that. The, the one thing I'll just say, and I, and this can, we can visit on this outside of here, is I just want to make sure in an emergency, when we need to act, we're not talking about four Bs. Because that's, uh, I, that, that's the time, it's time to get. So, um, we have to have that nimbleness to respond. And we, we know that we can respond. I mean, look at the pandemic. Look at the things that changed. I mean, the number of people coming in here online versus back in the day, that has changed. So, we need that nimbleness in this as well. Any other comments on the tabling motion? All right, all those in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion is carried. We have tabled that item. Uh, that takes us to B.
Counsel, I move to approve an amendment to Resolution 24, 2024-29, county council's 2024 meeting schedule to move the 2025 budget adoption to Monday, October 28th, 2024.
Second.
A little schedule correction on this one, and that's all this reflects, the final adoption. For those of you watching at home, you've heard us talk a lot about when the council does its budget and how, what goes in that budget. This date that we are moving the budget adoption to from October 22nd back to October 28th is the date we will adopt that budget. There will be a public hearing before that time where we will take comments from the public. Ms. Shell, I hate to put you on the spot, public hearing is?
Public hearing is on October the 8th at 5:00 PM. So, I, I have the calendar in front of us. Um, I wanted to also point out to, to the council that we already have a council meeting scheduled for the 29th. So, the room is available for the 28th as well, but I, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there, if you didn't want to have an adoption meeting separate from a regular council meeting, so.
So, let's have some discussion on that.
Can we just do them both at the same date? Can we just do them both at the same date, whatever? Because that doesn't take very long for the adoption meeting.
You're talking about the 29th, that you'd like that 20?
Well, whatever. Rather than calling staff in and, and calling, besides which, I look to make sure it didn't, when Halloween was, because while, you know, I don't have children at home, many of you do, and that's a big deal for a lot of people, you want to be home with your little ones.
Yeah, we're not going to do it on, on Halloween night.
If, if the council president shows up in a Batman costume, might be.
I'm not dressed like that.
Everybody has to be one of the Avengers.
So, that's, this is a good point. Do, if we wish to put it on adoption on Tues, wait, no, no, the issue, I, I want to back up for a second. Here's the issue with that. That makes sense on our end.
Right.
The issue is, on that bench, those, that input, because I, we had talked about this before, that input that they have to get all that input in by is literally like Halloween, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah. So, I, I think what may be inconvenient for us on a Monday will be more doable for the changes they have to literally do and verify by November 1st. Is that correct?
Actually, um, and I'll defer to Bree, but actually, we have to have it uploaded and in Gateway before November 1st.
That's correct.
So, we have to have it in and uploaded on the 31st.
Right. I think, yeah, and that was the idea about picking the Monday was to give them as much time as we could.
And that has been a nightmare in the past where we're like at the last minute and we, we almost didn't get it done, if you remember, what was that, two years ago? Three years ago? Uh, but why, I, I still don't understand, if we have to do that on the 20, the readings on the 28th, why can't we just have our council meeting on the 28th be done over? Why, why are we making this so hard?
Oh, because it's a Monday. None of us had thought about moving the council meeting. That was, I, we didn't realize that's what you meant.
That's not using common sense here. I mean, folks.
I think that's.
You say it's not sacred.
To me, uh, to me, the Monday's fine. Here's what I would kind of ask for us to do, maybe we can put this to the departments as well, just to keep that a little bit light, because again, I, I know what happens when the minute we're done on Monday, they all start working, and then they work that night, and then sometimes about 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, I go past this building and see that light on, when they don't think I will. Um, I would ask, we keep that Monday agenda real light on council requests. Anything that's got to be done for the regular agenda, and anything that can wait a minute, that'd be the time. And for a department, this would not be the time to unveil a 50-point strategy that you need to take an hour and a half in here. I just think this is our night.
A 20-minute department update.
Yeah. We'll get, we'll have plenty of time for that. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes, sir.
And let's just kind of force that to be that way.
So, we're going to move the regular council meeting to Monday?
If you all are good with that. And a light Monday.
It's in my calendar.
And, and it could be because of the gravity of the budget that we are dealing with a lot anyway that night, and, and all that. Hopefully not, but I don't know.
Um, we're not prepared for a resolution with regards to that Monday, so if you want to vote on it, then we can, we'll just bring that back for a signature at our next meeting, so.
Okay. All right, so you want to withdraw this one for now?
The resolution just references changes to the budget calendar and not the, um, regular county council, uh, calendar. I think you can still vote on it, and we'll just amend the resolution to reflect what is approved, and then you can sign it at next meeting.
All right.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
When do you have to turn it in for the local budget notices?
Pardon?
The local budget notices, when do you turn all that in?
Oh, um, we, is that, um, we have to, are, are you asking about when we have to advertise in Gateway, the?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay. We, we advertise in Gateway, we, uh, after the sessions are in September, we get it into Gateway on September the 25th.
So, okay, so then, I'll just make a motion. Counsel, I move that we set our, uh, budget adoption date to, uh, Monday, October 28th, 2024, and we simultaneously move our, uh, October 29th county council meeting to Monday, October 28th, 2024.
We've got a motion and a second on this. Any discussion, councilors? Let's go to pub, since this is a change to the budget, the public needs to be given the right to weigh in on this. If you have a public comment on this change to our budget adoption date, raise your hand on teams or come forward in the NatU Hill. All right. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Okay. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for patience as we figured that, that deadline.
And I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. I didn't see a date on there, when we're going to have a work session going over the numbers, like what our projected revenue is and, and so forth. And I, I hope that we don't plan to just walk into the budget workshops and when everything's already figured out. I, I hope, are we going to have a group get together, or just a few of you are going to get together, or what are we doing?
I think the preference is to make everyone suffer together, all together, and go through all of it. So, I think we could build that into that schedule if we've not already.
Um, so, let me share again.
And how much are they going to have by Friday? Because we have a work session on Friday, correct?
Uh, yes, not by Friday.
Not this Friday.
Not this Friday, no.
No, the, the work session for this Friday is regarding the jail budget.
Yeah.
So, um, we have tentative, and I put it on here, but we haven't, like, talked about it, was, I had for the 22nd, um, August the 22nd and August, um, the 29th. I hope to have all of the budgets by then. But right now, I've got a few departments that still have not turned in their budgets. So, yeah. They were due last week. They were due last week on the 8th, and I'm in the nag mode, and I'm doing the best I can to get the departments to submit.
Okay.
So, so you're calling those previews, which is a great term for us, I think, those two dates.
And. Would have to look, I, I can't remember if the, and I, I was, I was thinking that we would do that in the HR council conference room, because it's a preview, it still would be open to the public, because the, uh, NatU Hill rooms are not available, um, on those nights, but at least that would give you a preview of what's going on. So, I'm looking at, uh, the, probably more the 29th now, since I'm still working on trying to get everybody's information. The 29th then puts you that, uh, it would be the Thursday before the Labor Day weekend.
Okay.
So.
All right. Counselor Munson?
So, question, uh, on, oh, I can't, could you scroll back up just a little bit? On the 27th, uh, we're going to review, uh, the four Bs, and don't you need to have those, uh, budget information before we're doing the four B review?
Well, that's what I'm hoping, but we will definitely be reviewing the four Bs for the Monroe fire and, and the solid waste.
Yeah, well, I think, but that's pretty quick.
Those are pretty quick. We hope to have them by that time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really.
Yeah.
Important. I mean, even if the budgets aren't completely done, if we have the revenue.
Yeah. Yeah. And.
I've been informed that they are, they had partially, uh, working on the four Bs. Do you want to report on that, Ms. Auditor?
Sure. Uh, Michelle and I worked on the, um, four B that traditionally, um, Counselor McKim has put together for the overall, um, county budget. So, we have that about halfway completed, but obviously, we need all the budgetary information to enter, which is holding us up again. So, um, we need the departments to work with us and meet those deadlines.
Could you send privately a list of the department you're waiting on, please?
Yes, I'll do that.
I would like to see that, too.
I mean, you know, some of us know those folks.
And one thing I'll just kind of offer for folks in the public watching, you've heard a request tonight earlier for COLA, which is cost of living adjustment for our folks. It's a very important consideration. We have to see every bit of the budget being requested.
Yes.
Because what someone needs for, fill in the blank, at the Health Department, factors into certain funds, jail, you name it, it all factors in together and it's all going to be looked at before we figure out how we do what we do. All right. Any other questions?
And I just want to mention, I mean, this isn't like a two-week project that we give the, you know, the departments to do. The budget portal has been available for, to them since July the 12th.
Yeah.
And so they've had all of this time and I'm still struggling, you know, getting people to get their information. So.
I would just like, you know, on behalf of the jail, because I did speak with him. And you know, when the, when we were told that the supplementals and all the different things had to go into one line, remember, county attorney told the jail folks to do that? Well, that, Jordan really thought that needed to be broke down because if we do like a percentage, well, you need to see what the starting number is and not just what the total number is that ended up being budgeted because we don't, let's say if you're going to get a 5% raise, you don't give them a 5% raise on all the other things that go into the total. And so he did suggest that in June, that that needed to happen. And, and so there was a delay. I don't know whether he ever got the information. That was just a couple of days ago. I talked with him and he didn't have the information back yet as how he needed to enter it. So now I understand he's sick. So at any rate, I just wanted to make sure that we know that it isn't because he's been slow about it. He just had, had to get more information.
Ms. Churnking, you have something here.
I don't think there's a change in how we're budgeting those supplemental lines. There's going to be a change in how they're entered into AOD. So the supplemental lines shouldn't have impacted the budget.
Make sure he gets that when he returns.
Did you make sure he knew that?
We talked to him about it, so I'm not sure where the breakdown is in miscommunication, but we can follow up.
Okay.
Budgets are a work in process and this is part of that process. Any other council comments on that? And I need to take a look. We are.
Still have two more things to do.
Yeah. All right. So do, have we voted on that yet or have I lost my place? We have not. Public had no comments. And so can we go to a roll call vote?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Wilts.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right. Let's go on to item C. And this is discussion approval of an economic development corporation letter of support to be drafted.
Counsel, I move to open discussion and approval, the letter of support for the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation.
Second.
Counselor Iverson, can you speak to this just a bit?
Absolutely. And I'm happy to note that we have a member of the BDC, Jen Pearl, on line two to be able to answer questions. The letter that you have in the packet is a letter expressing support from this council. It does not obligate us to any funding now or into the future. And it simply says that we would like to be part of an economic development district, which could potentially allow us to access grants and loan funding opportunities, administrative and technical assistance, data and technology resources, and other resources and support. I think that's where I'll leave it. And Mr. President, it looks like our friends from the BDC might want to talk to.
Ms. Pearl, do you want to add to this? Welcome.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Good evening. And I, I'm so sorry I couldn't be there in person this evening. This is Jen Pearl. I'm the president of the BEDC. I'm between conferences up in northern Indiana. So thanks for your time. What this is, is essentially we're exploring establishing an economic development district with Owen and Brown counties. Out of the 92 counties across Indiana, there are only seven that are not in an EDD. An EDD is a federal designation where it's grouping of counties that essentially have shared interests in going after grants and other economic development endeavors together. So what this is, is saying that the three counties are interested in pursuing this. We would be seeking a letter of support from the state and then kind of a green light and support for doing a comprehensive economic development strategy for the three communities. So this stage in the process is just saying, yes, we would like to go ahead and explore that. If we go through that process, there are costs related to that. And if we get to that point, then we would make requests at that time and also be fundraising and such, you know, from our own sources. The benefit of an EDD is really strategically pulling people together across communities to think more regionally about economic development. We are not, we are not an island unto ourselves. We have flow of people and tourism, you know, between the counties in question here. It would also not replace other regional efforts such as ROI and others, but rather complement and open up doors for federal funding streams that we do not currently have. So, and we have great partners over in places like Owen County and in our surrounding counties, too. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about that in the process.
All right. Thank you. It sounds to me as an encouraging partnership between the three counties towards a future that is yet to be determined but hopeful, right?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. That sound too bad. Any comments, though, councilors? What, any thoughts on this or objections or, or other?
So is the request for a vote to support the, the letter?
Yeah. Does anyone object to a letter either from all of us, from me on behalf of the council, or those willing to sign on, or whatever variation you all like or don't like?
I move as a council that we support the, the letter of intent.
Second.
A motion is second on that. Any discussion? All right. I can do a voice vote on a resolution, right? Or a voice vote on a letter. Okay.
On the letter of support.
All right. If there's any comments from the public on this, come forward or in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing, seeing none. Let's go to a voice vote. All those who have been or signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl. We appreciate you waiting through all this tonight. All right. That takes us to item D.
Counsel, I move to open discussion for the council office 2025 budget.
Second.
I didn't even see it.
All right, Michelle.
So a copy of our 2025 budget was in the packet, but I'm going to pull it up here just a second.
Thank you.
And this is, this is just a proposal because I have to bring it to the entire council. So we've got to, you know, look at it. So.
I can't see it. Isn't this the entire council?
You are the entire.
The entire council is here.
Avengers unite.
This is like 25 people we've never saw.
Avengers. The grand council.
Okay. So as we have not, and I say we loosely, council has not decided on a COLA. You will see that the personnel account lines for 2025 are flat. There is an increase with longevity and that is due to Courtney's step increase for next year.
That, she just came on board, started.
One year.
That's cool.
She has a year.
Pardon?
She'll have a year.
Yes. We are budgeting the self-insurance at 13,000 per position. So, and then, you know, the FICA and PERFs. There's no change in the office supplies, no change in the copy printing supplies. What you'll see then is there's no change in the dues because we've not had an increase in those. I'm, also the contractual, which is FSG and WIS, will remain the same at 30,000 each. Professional services, just 400, no change in that one. We hardly ever use that and sometimes that gets moved around into the other accounts. I am asking again for an increase in the training and travel of $1,000. I am going to have to, I'm going to do some in-house transfers this year again, and I'm just going to be approximately $1,200 short in that line because we do have an additional person in this line. The, this is due to non-state called meetings and council only has one state called meeting, which is done in June, which allows council members as well as staff that's available or appointed can be taken out of that elected official training line. And so we have done that, but I'm still going to be short. I didn't even go to a couple of conferences this year just to, because I wanted Courtney to go instead. So, so there's that increase. I did an increase of the community services grant using the 4% growth quotient and I rounded it up to $174,000. No change in the postage or the legal notices and in the, the membership for BEDC is $5,750. And council has budgeted an additional 30,000 for BEDC. So there's no change in that. A slight increase, but you know, that kind of thing.
So council, this is a drafted budget request that we have for our own budgeting process. What questions or comments do you have on this as it stands? Counselor Iverson?
I'm going to steal Cheryl's thunder a little bit. But after being on Sophia Travis for a couple of years, I want to increase that line with abandon. But that's probably not the most responsible thing to do.
With abandon.
Yeah.
This is putting us in the other shoe, right?
Yep.
So it's, it's important we follow that. Other questions or comments?
Do you want something?
We don't even have this year's applications coming in yet.
That's right.
So I can't, it's hard for us to tell you all about the need that we're seeing.
Yeah.
But before we get to vote on this, we will have that information and we will share it with you all. 4% is, is in line of what we ask for other departments to do for their lines. But we have been increasing it slightly more than, than the growth quotient in some years. So I think we should wait and see what our, our numbers look like.
And the need.
So with that in mind, you've got a rough estimate for what we're doing here? Or do you need anything else?
No. Unless somebody, you know, wants to call me or, you know, make a suggestion or something, you know, this is what I plan on presenting to you guys again at the work sessions, budget work sessions.
Okay. And just as any other department would say, these funds are where the request is roughly where it is now. It could go down, could go based on the need of what we see with revenues, as Counsel McKim was pointing out. All right. Let's, we'll leave that item and we'll go to our second to last item. It's council comments. Councilors, what comments do you have? Counselor McKim?
I just kind of want to thank the members of the public that came here earlier to talk about a possible piece of land for the, for the jail. I really, I mean, maybe it's not the, maybe it's not quite big enough, but we heard some new information today that could, could possibly make it big enough. And so I, I really strongly think we, we need to look at it. I think it has a lot of advantages. And one advantage that didn't get mentioned, got mentioned that it was closer to services. It is actually walkable and bikeable. You can walk from here to that property.
Yes, you can.
On sidewalks and multi-use paths. So there is, you know, it is much more, it's not like a walk I'd like to do every single day. But I mean, that has been brought up before that there are going to be, going to be people who are going to need to walk to get to court. And I feel like that, you know, that, that when we find a property that is actually walkable, we need to at least seriously consider it. So that's.
We need to plant trees.
Well, trees would be good, yes. I'm just saying that we should, I, I think we should have it, we should at least be looking at it.
Yeah. Counselor Crossley?
Thank you. I'll keep it as brief as possible because I know we had a long night. But that's the job that we all get paid the big bucks to do. So that being said, we've seen our friends over in the city have conversations, community conversations. Apparently there was one tonight. Of course, we couldn't all be there because we are here serving our community as well. But we continue to keep talking about the unhoused situation. And that is, as we talked about with the cares board and whatnot that came through that we were talking about, that is also our unhoused, especially our street unhoused are also a part of our most vulnerable population as well. And I think all of us as a community actually care and we don't want to see people, you know, being out on the street. And we, we have a problem. We, we have a problem. Monroe County is not immune to this problem. This is a problem that is seen across the state and across the country as well. So as we continue to have these conversations, what I have seen every day that I drive to from, to work and back from work into my district is that literally in the south side of our community, that we have a growing number of our unhoused population. And that is a sad sight to see. No one wants to see people in, in encampments. And I hope that we can all figure out how we can work together to figure this stuff out. Having said that, I do find that, you know, I appreciate the mayor and her efforts and all that she's doing. But this isn't just a Bloomington, a city of Bloomington problem. This is now becoming a Monroe County issue as well. So we all should really, and I, I hope anybody that's listening, if you're on the city council, I hope you are because we watch your meetings. And anybody else that actually really cares, I really hope that we can band together as community leaders and as electeds to really try to come together to figure this out and work collaboratively together. I've seen so many times, some of us run on city-county relations. We want to better that. This is the part in our community where we can put our money where our mouth is and we can literally try to work together to make this a situation where we can actually band together and heck, maybe go up to the state house and figure this stuff out. They tell us that we need a dad. Well, we need the dad in this moment right now to figure this out as well. We can also go to a federal level as well. We have federal representatives that represent our very own community. So I just implore all of us to put all egos aside and really truly try to work for the better of our community, for our most vulnerable population. Because what we continue to see out west and the state of California, as they continue to clear out their encampments, we are just one step away of that happening. And that is. we are just one step away of that happening, and that is a cascade in effect that could possibly have dire consequences in our community. So I really implore our colleagues here to try to work together, in addition to the city as well, to really, truly come together and help aid in this effort. We didn't get here overnight, we're not going to solve it overnight, but we can try to do this together.
Other council comments?
Not following that.
Counselor Hogg.
Yes, in discussing this, I can't remember why I talked with you earlier, before we came in the meeting? Somebody was talking, oh, I know, I was talking to Lee. It was just recently in the news that Governor Gavin Newsom said, all right, folks, we've waited long enough, and it's time to do this, or they're not going to get state funding, they're not going to get the other funding, because through their generosity, and they really well-meaning people in the state of California really thought they were doing what was best, but what they were doing was just welcoming more and more than what that state could handle. I just hope that we don't make the same mistake here, because there's only just so much this county can handle, and our hearts can be big, but we, it takes, it takes a lot of dollars, and so many of these folks come here because our hearts are so big, and, and it's really becoming an impossible situation. Just today, a friend of mine sent a picture, and, and, you know, they just reach a boiling point where they just can't stand anymore, where we've got businesses who every morning they have to go clean up the needles and clean up the mess that people literally leave right at their business store. And, and so this is, it really is time to say enough. I know what the answer's going to be, but we really can't do the same thing that California's doing, where they're losing their businesses, they're losing their population of people who could improve the situation. So it's, it's a tough, it's a tough situation, but we have to respect the people who live here and are having to deal with that every day.
Thank you. Counselor Wilts.
Yeah, I concur, I will say that. Everybody said that kind of thing way better than I could. I will just say something a little bit lighter. Since we've been in this meeting, my daughter texted me a photo from where she lives in Vermont, and it was her and her roommates, and as I zoomed in, they're all holding something up, I should, I should, Counselor Crossley, and I zoom in, and it's, I voted early stickers. They've already voted.
Good for them.
Fantastic for them, fantastic for Vermont, and it's all great. That just reminds me, though, that if you all haven't made a plan to vote, or if you have any doubts, questions, you know, or are just curious, go to indiana voters.in.gov and check it out, because it's time, we, you know, never too early to do it.
Literally.
That's all I'm saying.
Make a plan.
Make a plan.
Is there any other council comment? I have one just for the public good, and shortly, the notice soon, at some point, the notice will be posted for our Friday meeting, it's a council work session at 10:00 AM here in the NatU Hill meeting room. I just want to briefly mention the agenda here, because it is one of some important matters that we're talking about. We will be talking about correctional center, center funding, and of course, that includes considerations as for not only a correction center, but considerations for what is currently the other entities beyond the jail in the Justice Building, so courts and prosecutor, those things that are also in that building. So we'll be talking about timelines related to funding that we would do, income tax ordinance procedures that could be related to that, under consideration of the council, review of impact that this would have upon Monroe County members, and then councilors will have an opportunity to offer any initial thoughts they have as we determine our path forward. I'd encourage councilors to come with that candor and those thoughts as we look at that and kind of walk towards the problem together and figure out what we do to do it best. All right? Anything else? That's enough for tonight. Thanks, everybody, we are adjourned.
Have a good night.
Thank you.